Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 21st, Planning Board meeting. I'd like to call to order the meeting for tonight. If you can all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First things first. I have to make the usual reminders that everyone make their microphone, make sure your microphone's turned on and to speak clearly in the microphone. The next Planning Board meeting is currently scheduled for June 4th at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. All right. I need to appoint two individuals to fill in some seats. Kevin, can you? Mark, can you fill in for Kevin? And then Nelson, can you fill in for Bob?
I think I can do that.
All right. I think you can. All right. All right, so are there any announcements from the town?
Nothing right now. Just moving on to consent agenda.
All right. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Can't remember how Bob opens the consent agenda. What is the consent agenda?
I will move the consent agenda for regional impact determinations. Sorry. Right there.
Gotcha.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda for regional impact determinations.
Is there a second? All right. Motion moved by Lynn, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? All right. Motion moves is, is that seven? Six, zero, zero. I am nervous. All right. Item number two on the consent, on the agenda is, well, actually, Bob, Robert, is now a good time to ask you?
Now, read the, read the hearing in first. Read the notice on the agenda. So, number three.
All right. So, item number three, Armada Realty LLC, applicant owner, continued review for final approval of a site plan involving the consolidation of two lots into a single parcel, rising of the existing single-family dwelling and construction of a proposed restaurant building with drive-through along with associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and the Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 6E-2, lot six and seven, case Planning Board 2024-06. And this item is continued from March 5th and April 16th of 2024 Planning Board meetings. Robert, do you have anything that I need, that we need to know?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, at this point, applicant was last before you in March of '24. At that meeting, the board had asked the applicant to submit an architectural rendering of the proposed restaurant, which they've now done. It's included in the packets. They've also, at the last meeting, the board discussed the central landscaping area at the time, which the applicant had indicated they weren't sure, it may not be permanent. But the set of plans that staff most recently reviewed, that landscaped area in the middle does still show there. The only issue that we have, we're not opposed to it at all, but the only issue that we have with it is there's some picnic tables that are shown there. So, if they are going to keep those, that would mess with the parking calculations, so that they would need to get a waiver from the parking calculation to have that. Outside of that, the application has already been accepted as complete. The applicant has submitted a couple of waiver requests that do need to be acted on, which I'm sure they will touch on. And that's what I have right now.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit more about the project.
Good evening. Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates here, representing the proposed site plan for Hot Rise Restaurant at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway in Merrimack, New Hampshire. With me tonight, William Heng from Armada Realty, the petitioner for the new restaurant. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
I didn't hear your, I didn't hear his name. Could you say it?
William Heng.
William.
William Heng.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for having us tonight here. As Robert pointed out, we are here at the last hearing in March. That was prior to getting review comments from staff and from the review engineer. We asked that we continue that last hearing to address the concerns that come in from that and make sure that we've addressed everything, as well as comments and stuff that were raised by the board at the last hearing. Just going to quickly go through some of the changes that we made based on the comments that the board was looking for at that last hearing. On sheet three of 18, the main plan set, that's where most of our changes happened. Traffic arrows were asked by Nelson to be added to the plan so we could understand the flow of traffic through the site. So, again, we have two-way traffic in the front of the building. We have three access points coming into the site, one coming in and two coming out. And then we have one-way circulation around the back and to the side for the drive-through of the building itself. The next thing we were asked is to add some no-parking signs along the northerly property line, as well as a do-not-block the intersection for the abutter to the back that uses our main access through and the easement through to the property that's there. Those were added to the plans. The center island coming into the site, right here, this was a raised planted island. The fire department asked that we remove the plants on that. However, doing some of the turning movements, I'll show you later, through the site, it makes more sense to paint that than just to have a concrete island in the middle of that. It allows fire trucks, delivery trucks for the applicant to get through. So, we made that change to paint that. Still cleaning up that intersection, so it's not a wide-open intersection, has defined lanes for people coming in and people leaving the site.
I'm sorry, where is that at?
That is right here in the middle, right here. So, this, that hatched area was a raised planted island that the, they asked us to remove the plants and then it kind of makes it a concrete island in the middle, really. Makes more sense painting, in our opinion. One of the things we added in the back left corner was a loading space that was not shown on the original application. That's in the back of the building. Makes a lot of sense for this site where it's located, I think, at that location. On the left side, we had angled spaces here that we called out that we would make employee spaces only. We put signs to that on this application here. So, the plans in front of you have employee parking only at that location there. We did not show any stacking for the drive-through lane at that. Obviously, I think we all were in agreement at that last hearing that this was a really nice location for a drive-through. You've seen a lot that have a lot of confusions on site. So, this has 11 spaces before we even get to the back of the, his existing building. So, again, we feel that there is adequate traffic stacking for the drive-through at this location. One of the abutters had brought up a question about dumpster. So, we put note 24 on sheet, on this sheet here, it's down here in this location here, right at the bottom here. It's note number 24 that states that trash pickup will be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Then, to take a look at the landscape plan that Robert just brought up. So, we did leave the landscape in the middle, but we did leave the note that says that this is not part of the landscaping that needs to be for CO of the site. But as he moves forward and is successful, he has basically a zen garden in the middle of the building. The one thing I'll clarify, and I see your comment now, these were laid out as benches, not as picnic tables. I do, I talked to Mitch in my office, like, they kind of do look like picnic tables, so I understand that. These were just benches for people to be just on the site, kind of like your Merrimack outlets. There's benches all around there for people to sit as they're kind of in the area. So, again, if staff feels that we need to work on the parking counts, we can, but they're not picnic tables. We're not envisioning outside seating. It's more of, you know, he's got a chiropractor on one side, he's got some other tenants in the building. It just, it's a nice little area as part of the development, I thought. So, again, we've left it. Again, we can work with staff if there's any concerns with board members on this, but I don't think there would be. We can call them out more clearly that they're benches and not picnic tables.
Matt?
Yes.
Are the current tenants in your existing building staying?
Yes. I mean, except.
I was going to say that. All right, just going to move over.
You're not, you're not a tenant.
What was the answer to that question?
All the tenants are staying, but Hot Rise would go into this new building. We wouldn't have two Hot Rises.
Yeah.
But all the other tenants are staying at this point.
All the others, and there'd be another tenant moving in.
There'd be somebody there, we don't have that yet, nor has he pushed that yet. I think one of the things everybody, and this has been in my industry, it's killing us, but everything's taken way longer than it should to get permits, to get this, that. So, to go market to somebody, it's just not worth it till he knows and he's ready to build and he's closer along. One thing we did change was the lighting slightly. He's working with Dennis Stevens' office in Merrimack here to kind of put together final plans and internal. So, they actually revised the landscape, the lighting plan a little bit. Still downcast lighting around the building like we had shown on the renderings that you see. But the parking lot lighting is going to be more your typical LED light that you see up on the poles that come down there. So, all meets the requirements of town. We did have one comment that we had some spillage over the back property line. That's been reduced to the point two to meet the requirements of the, of the town now. As I said, at the back of this plan set, it was requested from the fire department and planning and stuff like that to do some turning movements to the site. So, here's the fire truck, ladder truck from Merrimack. And as you can see, this center painted island, they were going to be riding over that, and they were okay with that. I mean, they said we could leave it to concrete, but to me, that just didn't make a lot of sense. So, we showed that they can get their vehicle all the way through the site and back out. I don't think I have final sign-off yet from anybody yet up there, but we'll have it shortly, kind of, and it does make it through. We also then threw a WB-50, so he could make sure that he could service his site for what he needed to. And then the last one goes back to the waiver request. This is just a passenger car. But at the last hearing, I explained to you guys that, you know, for angled spaces, you require 18 feet. With no cars in the drive-through, I have 24. With a car in the drive-through, I have 12. Vehicles can still get around through the site and back. And again, we said they'd be only employees, so there'd be nobody in the lane to back out at that time. So, again, I think we've shown that all three vehicles, from the fire ladder truck to a box truck to a car, make it through our site and comfortably through our site, not affecting different lanes and stuff like that as they get through the site. My next one, I was going to apologize to Maureen, but she's not here tonight. We do have to ask for two waivers. That came up during the review process. The first one is related to drainage. Our drainage for this site here is proposed to be caught and catch, so currently, right now, there are three leaching catch basins on site. So, we're removing those to put in a real system to handle the runoff and the drainage that's there. We have a catch basin in the upper corner behind the building. We have a catch basin up by the dumpsters. Those drain down into what is our underground system here. We also have catch basins through our parking lot in front of his existing building. All those pipes meet the requirements in your regulations of being in a minimum of 15-inch pipe. Then it goes into our underground system, which are 24-inch half-moon systems underneath there. The drainage in the road right here that goes all the way down to the intersection is a 12-inch pipe. So, I can't put a 15 into a 12. It doesn't make sense. And our system is, our 24-inch system actually has, they would call out a 12-inch pipe coming out of it. So, we're not undersizing our system or anything like that, but we're matching this last run, just this last run, from our system to the existing catch basin as a 12-inch. And that's the waiver request that I would, I'm requesting, we submitted with this application. The second waiver request is related to the parking, as I spoke to earlier, the handicap spaces needing 18. We have 24 when nobody's there, but only 12 if there's somebody in that space there. Again, why we restricted them to only employee. And then lastly, from there, is the rendering that you asked for. I think Williams has been working with Dennis Stevens to come up with a neat concept for this site here. This is what he's put forward to you guys here. We have internal type stuff as well that we submitted, kind of showing where the freezers, bathrooms, and that kind of stuff, if you need me to go through that. But there's our rendering. That wraps up the majority of changes of the plans in front of the board tonight. We obviously made a lot of other minor changes to like planning notes and details that were based on Fosse and O'Neill's comments and staff stuff, but I don't really, I kind of took out the main ones that we took changes to. I don't think you need me to see where I changed a note on a detail for a catch basin to say town of Merrimack and stuff like that. So, again, I think that, I tried to go through the notes from the last meeting. That's what I had from Nelson and all the board members there, and I hope that I answered your questions and will take any questions, which I'm sure you have, moving forward. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you taking the time to explain all that. Comments, questions from the board?
Oh, I have a bunch.
Nelson?
Okay. Would you talk for a minute about the sewerage handling here? I understand there were some issues with the pitch of the pipes leading off the site and how it's all handled. And there's some leach fields shown on some of these plans. And are they still viable? Are they still working? Or how's the whole system work of proposed sewerage?
So, fortunately for me, I've been in front of the zoning board trying to deal with sewer for the last six months or so, and I've learned a lot about the Merrimack Sewer Department.
Pass it on, please.
Good, good.
I've got all the plans and everything like that that's out there. So, basically, we have this really weird just extension that comes up to our site, right in the corner here of our property. That feeds the existing building that he has currently. The existing house is on a septic system. That's being removed. That's not going to be continued to be used. We then are tying into this manhole here. We're coming across the site with our sewer to our tanks. So, what happened is, we had the tanks in the parking lot, right out here, Nelson, the grease trap. They proposed to move it right here in the green space between here. So, we've cleaned up that now. So, now this site will come out to the grease trap and then goes across and down to the sewer system there. They just asked us to tweak out the slopes of the pipe in the design, but there's no issues or concerns with that stuff that's there. So, we're tying in the new building to existing sewer that's on site, that is at the corner of our site right now down here. And that's all. We are waiting for the sewer discharge permit. I met with the Merrimack Village Water District three weeks ago or so. We got his yearly water usage numbers from his existing store, so that we can kind of get a rough idea of what the flows are. And we're submitting that sewer discharge permit back to them, obviously, in a few, once we get through this stuff here.
What about the issue that was raised with the pitch of the pipes? That being?
We got them all to work.
You changed them?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. That's different than what's in the memo we got from staff. So, Robert, have you seen these revisions? Because your memo to us points out some-
The waste, I got that, yeah.
-apparent deficiencies in the pitch of the pipes.
Just on, just number B, so, I'm sorry, Nelson, there was this one pipe. So, there is a one pipe that's like eight feet from the building to the tank, and we had it at 1%. They want it to be 2%.
Yeah.
So, it's going to change it about .1 feet to do that. The run is not very long. If I was 100 feet, it would be an issue, but we're not that long. So, no. We don't have, I don't have any problems meeting the requirements that they have here, that the sewer department has.
Does the present plan meet that, or is that a revision to the plan right now?
You have to give me a minute on that one. I'm going to take a look at what we submitted back. So, if you want to ask me another question, I can, while I'm looking for this, I'll get to that answer. Those have all been designed on this new plan. So, we submitted a package back to you, and that was the letter dated May 2nd to Robert Price. And it says, building lateral showing 1% slope, minimum requirement 2%. Sewer designed to have eight-inch main run from sewer manhole 10 to that at .5%. All other pro sewer lines have been designed to 2%. See sheet five. So, yes, we've addressed all those comments that you got in your letter there. They have not been reviewed a second time, however.
Right. So, what we have in the memo is the most recent comments that we've received from the wastewater department, which reflect the original revision or the original plan set.
Okay.
And our set addresses them all and sent them back. Now, whether or not-
So, you have yet to review that, right?
Wastewater has not given us comments on that yet.
Yeah.
But that would be addressed as part of a conditional approval.
Pardon?
That would be addressed as part of any conditional approval.
Yes, okay.
Like, number, number seven of theirs was sheet 10, the sewer profile showing .5 pitch is required of minimum 2. All sewer service lines have been designed to 2%, see sheet five. So, we've addressed all theirs to satisfaction, we thought, and sent them back.
Okay. And what happens to the, there was one plan that showed a septic system, a leach field on the site.
They'd be removed.
It's going to be removed, okay.
Well, capped or cleaned, or however they do that at the state level, yes.
Yeah. There's a whole process there.
Yes, yep.
But all of the sewerage now will be handled through the Merrimack system.
Correct.
Going north for a while and then down.
Correct, yep.
Okay. I wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
I wasn't either until I just-
Any other comments or questions? Mark?
Hi there. Could I have a little clarification, just from an engineering standpoint, on the stormwater drainage?
Yep.
You have a pipe size conflict, right, where you go from 15 down to 12? Is that a groundwater recharge system, or is that just a holding system until that 12-inch pipe can catch up with capacity in a storm event?
We have designed that as an infiltration system. And I'm not going down from a size, it's 12 and 12. So, I did not change from a 15 to a 12. Originally, we did. Your original plan's out of 15 to a 12. We changed that, so it's 12 and 12.
So, everything out of the catch basins in are 12?
Yes. Everything out, so, let me put it up here. Creating utility plan. Okay. So, the catch basins in the back here.
Yep.
And here, all these pipes that go to our drain, these are all 15-inch pipes. This pipe right here, this is the only 12-inch coming out of the system. And again, typically on these systems, we do a smaller, you know, we call it a piss hole in it. So, usually, it's anywhere from two, three, four inches.
Is that a technical term?
It's an engineering term.
So, a lot of times, that can be like a two-inch hole, orifice that's coming out of the, we have a 12-inch coming out of this here, so that's how it's been designed.
So, in a heavy rain event?
Yes.
That is designed to hold water until the time in which the 12-inch pipe can catch up with capacity?
And that's our hydroCAD shows all those, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then the only other comment I had last time was just about the size of the entrance and that turn radius. I think you've clarified that with the descriptions around the trailers and fire trucks. Site distance from that point, if I recall, there was a, an increase in elevation along Daniel Webster Highway to the north? Where is that exit? You're right at the peak.
Yeah, pretty much, we're right at the peak.
Okay. So, there's no site distance that's considered either way. And two 10-foot lanes to exit there is sufficient for, with that turn radius to get out? It seems like that is pretty tight. So, you've got a right turn and a left turn exit?
Correct.
Both of which are only 10 feet.
Again, you know, fire truck's going to use all 20 feet there, plus and minus, when he goes through. The box truck will use just the lane as he goes through, which was nice. And then there's the passenger car being able to come right along the edge and still make that turn and make it all the way around. So, we feel comfortable with those.
Those hash marks, is an island right now that's going to go away?
This here?
Yes.
It was, it's, it's striping right now, shown as striping. It was an island on the previous application in front of you.
So, no island.
So, no island, so there's a little bit of wiggle room as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then one more, just on the landscaping, you're phasing for the additional landscaping that are in between the two buildings. Can you explain why you're waiting on that and not doing that as part of the initial project?
As I, well, you were in here earlier, but as we were talking here, costs are through the roof right now. And he's, we're close to about $2.5 million for this building that he started at, hoping to be at $1.5 million. So, I was trying to give my client a little leeway. I feel like he's done a very nice product in town for 20 years. I felt I could use a little bit of that. It's not required for landscaping, so I could just take it off the plan and leave it as no. And then he'd call me in five, six years. I figured this way, he's got something from terrain design he can go with. I thought it was a nice thing. Again, if it's causing a big, we just take it off and move on. But I thought it made sense to kind of leave him something where terrain has done it and it looked nice, so that was why.
Do you have an estimated timeframe in which you'd want to try to install that?
It would be with, you know, five years, something along those lines.
Just, if I could, if that could just get labeled on the plan as like a phase two feature?
It did, note nine says this is not part of the landscape design will be installed, but I, we can modify it a little bit. But yes, there is a note nine on it.
Would you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So, what I said on the note was, hold on, I'll read it specifically, because I-
This is the landscaping along?
This is the landscape in the middle, yep.
Along Route 3, right?
We said, no, this is not along Route 3. This is in between the two buildings.
Oh, between the two buildings.
This is just site kind of beautification, I would call it.
Okay. Along Route 3, you're putting in what you showed here.
That's all has to be, yeah. That's all part of your requirement for trees and shrubs and all that, yep.
Okay.
So, note nine just said, the proposed landscape area is not required per town regulations and shall be installed at the owner's discretion. And we can modify within, if we want to, but I thought that was-
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns or questions?
It's just that that is a really nice amenity to have between those two buildings. I would encourage you to try to do that sooner rather than later, to whatever extent you can, because that'll, that'll really make that area nice.
But you do want shade in there, you know? Otherwise, you're right in the beating sun and you won't use it much.
Okay.
Nelson, some people like the beating sun.
Some people do.
Yes, but they can, there's room enough for both in this space.
All right. With that said, I can open it up to public opinion, questions, comments? Once?
Anyone want to speak before?
Want to speak? No? Okay. So, we'll close the public hearing. And then, Robert, in Bob's famous words, what is the will of the board?
You have to act on the waivers.
I have to act on waivers. All right.
I'm going to-
On the waivers, yes.
Yep. I'm going to move that we grant the requested waivers in that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and a waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Waiver, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
What are we wavering, please?
It's right in the minutes, in the memo.
My apologies, Nelson.
All right.
Give me a moment.
To allow storm drain system pipe diameter of 12 inches where 15 is required.
Okay.
And to allow a one-way aisle width of 12 feet where 18 is required, both of which Matt mentioned.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye? You're in favor? All right. Abstaining? All right. Six, zero, zero. Motion moves.
Was there one more from Robert that we didn't get in the memo?
Lynn covered both of them in her motion.
Yeah? Okay. I thought there was another.
And, moving forward, I would like to make a motion, find that with the granted waivers and the recommended conditions of approval, the applicant meets all applicable regulation, regulatory requirements necessary, and further to grant conditional final approval to the application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated May 17th, 2024.
Is there a second? All right. Motion by Lynn and seconded by Mark. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion moves, six, zero, zero.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Have a good night.
We look forward to it.
Item number four on the agenda, CA Property Acquisitions LLC, applicant and BTC Realty Owner, review for acceptance of the final approval of a site plan to construct a one-story, 8,451-square-foot veterinary clinic and kennel with associated site improvements. The parcel is located on 601 Herrick Street in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 3D-2, lot 21, case Planning Board 2024-12. Robert, is there anything that we need to know?
Just to introduce the project, the applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, roughly 8,500-square-foot veterinary clinic and, as town determines, a kennel, basically a grooming and boarding operation with site improvements at the 106 Herrick Street property. Board may remember that property as being a, the former application site of the Ultimate Bimmer Project, the original one. That application has since been withdrawn, so this application could move forward. We are still, at this time, awaiting Fosse and O'Neill commentary, but the applicant has submitted everything else that we need for you to be able to accept the application. everything else that we need for you to be able to accept the application, and there are no waivers requested at this time.
Okay, thank you for joining us, sir, please turn your mic on, introduce yourself and tell us a bit about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Joe Peznola from Hancock Associates, representing C.A. Acquisitions. Just to introduce kind of the players here, C.A. Acquisitions, also known as Compton Addy, is the, kind of the, going to be the site owner, and they're going to build the building and then lease it to Meramec Veterinary Hospital. So with us, with us tonight is, is some representatives of the hospital. We have Jamie Roachfort, the medical director, Amy Hebert, the hospital director, and Tim Geneko, who is the managing, manager of regional operations for the, for, for the facilities. Also with us is Mark Whiteholt from Compton Addy. So just understand who, who the players are and what we're doing. But this is the Meramec Veterinary Hospital, it's currently located at two thirty-five Daniel Webster Highway. They've kind of outgrown their existing facility, they need a new building, they need a modern building so that they can continue to provide the care to the, to the pets that they service, the animals that they service there so, so, so well. The current facility at two thirty-five is around eight thousand square feet, and this is around eight thousand square feet, but it's, in, in this case, the new building will be on one, one floor. It'll have fifty-three parking spaces around three sides of the building and where forty-two is, is proposed. The existing site is at one oh six Herrick Street, it's a vacant site right now. It has been, it's cleared, and as was mentioned, it was the subject of a automotive approved site plan, which has, which would, no relation to any of the players here, but it's been, that's been withdrawn. It's a one and a half acre site, it's kind of in a depression, it's, it's well down off of Daniel Webster, and even when you come off of Herrick and come around the corner, the site drops, drops even more. We will be building up the site a little bit, but we, we, we will be still kind of in, in that, in that hole. It does have a bunch of frontage on Daniel Webster Highway and quite a bit on Herrick, so it's kind of a unique situation in which we don't, we've got a lot of roadway around us, but we do have residential neighbors to the north, and some of the design aspects try to be sensitive to that. We do have municipal sewer and water available to the site, and we will be working with Meramec Village District on, on the details of that, we have given them our water demands, and obviously the plans include how we're getting sewer from the site and how we're getting water to the site. It is in the C-two commercial district, it's also in the Aquifer Conservancy District. We did meet with the Conservation Commission to introduce the project to them, and I believe they were going to forward to your board some correspondence with regard to that. As I said, we're, we're trying to be sensitive to the residential neighbors in the area, even though it is a C-two district and it is on Daniel Webster Highway. So currently, the, the hospital has a kennel boarding overnight. They're, they're going to stop that, that practice and they're going to just do daycare during business hours for, for people to drop their pets off and grooming, so those will be two aspects, but there'll be no overnight boarding, all the pets will be kept inside except to relieve themselves, you know, to go to the bathroom, and there'll be a small fenced-in area up against the building with grass that they can, they can go there and they'll be supervised as they do that, they'll be going out there. There'll be no, no pets allowed, you know, outside unattended and, you know, no, no noise, noise issues from there. The zoning board has, has approved the special exception for the uses for the veterinary hospital, and they're calling it kennel because I think that's just the way it fits into the use schedule within the, within the zoning ordinance. So the site, we're going to come in, in the same location as the automotive use was going to, right at the corner, which gives us good site distances on, on either side of Herrick Street. Herrick Street is a very lightly-used roadway as far as trips. We did do a traffic study, not a lot of traffic going on there. Obviously, Daniel Webster Highway, there's some traffic there. So again, fifty-three spaces, I think we're required to have forty-two by the, the ordinance, so we're doing that around three sides. The main entry will be facing south, that's where we'll have our, our handicap parking and so forth. We do have our infiltration basin to the north, we tried to put it over there so that we could provide some additional buffering, and we didn't have, you know, cars parked up against the residential property lines. We are proposing a six-foot stockade fence along that property line, but we also wanted to just buffer that as much as possible, so we put our, our infiltration basin there for our, our drainage. So just to go, go over some of the particulars, Meramec Veterinary Hospital has been in town for thirty years, need to relocate to get more of an efficient facility, continue to employ approximately forty local employees, continue to service approximately fifty pets per day, continue the pet daycare and grooming, cease the overnight boarding, limit the over, outdoor activity, and the, the building design will feature modern soundproofing to, to also help, help with that. We're fully compliant with all of the zoning requirements, we don't believe we need any waivers, but we'll work through the process of peer review and, and see how that's, see how that, that goes. So we've submitted the site plan, a comprehensive landscape plan, a lighting plan featuring dark sky and, and full cutoff lighting fixtures for the parking lot. We've presented a cover letter that outlines how we believe we meet zoning compliance. We did do a traffic memorandum by TEC Traffic Engineer, they looked at site distances up on the intersection of Herrick and, and Daniel Webster Highway, they looked at the, the speeds, the posted speed limit in, in that area of DW is forty, but they did some tailing studies and they were catching some people doing around fifty. So they looked at, they looked at the ASHTO requirements for, for site distances, for both stopping site distances and intersection site distances, and they're in the four hundred to five hundred and fifty range as far as the requirements, and we've got a thousand feet in each direction, so there's no site distance problems. As I said, Herrick Street is very low, traffic volumes, is six vehicles coming and going in the, in the peak hour. We're projected to do, in the, in the morning peak hour, probably twenty, twenty vehicles in, thirteen vehicles out in the afternoon, just kind of the reverse, eleven and, and twenty, ninety-two vehicles in and out over the course of the, course of the timeframe. They looked at a distribution that was kind of equal, half the trips going north, half the trips going south, it's, it's kind, this is a destination, it's not, you know, again, we're, we're in a hole and, and we asked the hospital if they wanted presence on Daniel Webster Highway, if they want to raise the whole site so you could see the building, and they said, no, it's not, as long as we have a sign, people will know where they're going, and it, it's a destination thing. But the traffic engineer even looked at if we put all of that traffic going south and, or all of that traffic going north, and there's no impact, so we're, we're pretty solid from, from the traffic standpoint. We have done full architectural schematic plans with elevations, and I think, I hope, that DJSA has, has done a job that you, you find pleasing. We've submitted the filing fees and application lists. So with that, I think, I, I do have kind of gone through arguments for, for approval that, that your ordinance goes, goes into, we might be, that might be a little premature, maybe get Fussin O'Neil to, to get the peer review done, certainly answer any questions the, the board has with regards to the proposal, and maybe we can, we can leave arguments for how we meet your requirements for site plan approval to, to another day, knowing that we're gonna, we're gonna continue this. I do have a picture of the building. There it is.
Very nice looking.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for taking the time to explain all that, and it is a very nice looking building. Board members, do you have any comments?
Exception, sorry, acceptance first, please.
Acceptance first, all right, so we'll need to make a motion to accept it for completeness?
I have questions, Hakeem, I have questions.
Nelson?
Yeah, my question, it has to do with this piece of adjacent property to the north that is, what's the ultimate disposition of that property? It's a long, narrow, skinny piece that goes up to the Route Three.
It's not a property that's owned by the current owner that, that my client has under agreement. We're showing it as being owned by RNS Russell care of Dana Patterson, but it is a strange parcel that's kind of buffering the, the two residential lots to the north. I don't know the original, the, the details on the background of where that, how that parcel came to be.
I would ask that question of staff then.
Yeah, no idea, it's always been a mystery to me, but what the applicant said is true, it's a privately held piece.
We didn't notice it before with the last site plan that came through with that question, so I guess, the other thought I had was, do you have anything that, how is this going to look from Route Three? I was looking at the, you know, you're elevated up and you're looking at the roof of this building, which is unusual.
Well, it, it is a, a flat roof building, it's about seventeen feet, eight inches tall. The topographic relief, we're, we're setting the finished floor at elevation one forty-eight, and Daniel Webster Highway is at one sixty-two.
Yeah.
So that's a, a difference of fourteen feet. So yeah, I think you'll see a, a sliver of the building if you're, if you're looking for it, as far as the, the roof.
Well, will there be roof apparatus there, there be AC units, air handling?
Yeah, yes, we'll have air handling and AC units, we could, we could look in, talk to the architect about providing some kind of a, a screen. I think the, the maximum height is, is per building code, so I'm not sure what, what that means. I don't, and I don't, I don't think a pertinence is or a, a screen fence would even qualify for the height calculation, but we could certainly look at that, find out how big those items will be, and then I understand your concern.
Yeah.
That we can see them, and we don't want to, so we'll come up with some kind of a, a screening for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
So now you, you can make your motion.
Now, now we can.
Sorry. I'll move that we vote to accept the application as the application is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction and to allow this board to make an informed decision.
Is there a second? All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Barbara, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Six, zero, zero, motion moves. Now, what is the next?
I have.
Now we can open up for questions.
Couple of things, I am very pleased to hear that you are not going to do doggy daycare outside. There is another property in town that does, and it irritates the daylights out of their neighbors, so the fact that you're going to let them do potty breaks and that's it is, I am really, really pleased that you're doing that. Secondly, you mentioned that it's been in existence for thirty years, it's been there longer than that. Because I remember when it was a little cape in that same location, and it kind of evolved with a little addition here and a little addition here, and that was back in the seventies.
Well, I, I stand corrected, but I, one of the arguments I was going to make for, for approval of the site plan was consistency with the master plan, one of the things in the master plan said to foster keeping, you know, the, the commercial residents and the commercial citizens in town and, and foster that, and we, we think it's great that they, they need to get into a new place and they want to stay here.
It was back in the late seventies that Eric Clough first started doing a rabies clinic in town, and that went for many, many, many years, so, until the Veterinary Association at the state level changed their rules. But anyway, I'm pleased to hear what, what you're doing, I love the, the view of the, the building, I like it down in the, kind of in the hole where it's not fronting on DW, and it, it kind of, it, I think with the, the brick will blend a lot better, and you've got a great space there and the interior space is designed well. I'm very familiar with veterinary clinics and having worked with dogs for a bazillion years, and I think this is a good plan.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I would just second some of Lynn's comments in that I think they've done a really nice job in the presentation to us, you addressed all of the questions that we have, except the roof view, but, but other than that, I, I think you, you put a lot of thought into this, and you did.
Yes.
Follow the rules and you made it a nice-looking place.
Yep.
So, thank you. We ought to open for public discussion, however.
Mark?
Yeah, a question for you, you mentioned that you were servicing, I believe, fifty dogs, is that what you will have in daycare every day, or? Or is that like a total census between outpatient services and?
Introduce yourself, please.
Yep, Amy Hebert, One Diesel Camp Road in Wyndham, New Hampshire, I'm the hospital director for Meramec Veterinary Hospital. On average, we see about forty to sixty dogs through daycare. Appointment-wise, somewhere between thirty and fifty, so, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good number.
Yeah.
Do you want me to continue on with public comment?
Okay.
So are you planning an open space for daycare so that they're all intermingled, et cetera?
Yeah, so we've actually designed a area that allows us to parcel it off depending on the groups of daycare. One of our big goals was to make sure that the, the dogs are in an environment that they can stay out most of the day, so they're not in a caged area, however, we've been able to parcel it off to make sure that obviously safety is our priority number one concern, and we're able to parcel them into different groups.
And my final question is, what are you doing for noise abatement, because I have dogs too, so, I know when you get several dogs together and they start talking together, it gets very noisy outside as well as inside, so what do you do, what are you using for noise abatement so that the neighbors aren't hearing?
We can.
The barking?
We'll get back to you, I want to get with the architect, the architect has, has said modern soundproofing.
Well, that means a lot of things.
Yeah, so I, I, you're looking for, for particulars, I will get you particulars on, you know, exactly how they go about doing that and even what the effectiveness is, you know, is as far as abatement of X number of decibels on the inside equals, you know, zero outside, hopefully.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'll.
Just two comments, I, I agree with a couple of the others that were made, in particular the potential requirement or need for roof screening, if that's visible from Daniel Webster Highway. I think you should take a look at that and would encourage you to do some version of green screening rather than just corrugated metal. And then on the, the insulation, I agree with that, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, and then you also show a monument sign up by the roadway as well as, I believe, a building sign on one of the elevations, is that, are both the signs necessary if the building is depressed down and lowered, or will the monument sign?
I, I think we, we looked at the, the ordinance for the allowances and. I think we looked at the ordinance for the allowances and it's actually a monument sign up on DW, a way finding sign down at the entrance to Herrick so that they can, they know that that's where to turn in and then the building sign. And all the signs were in accordance with the ordinance. I can certainly, you know, we can get back to you on, are they all necessary from the standpoint of the, especially the building sign, seeing that it's not going to be visible from DW?
Yeah, and as you're coming from south to north, you'll see the monument sign and then immediately adjacent to it really is the building sign in the same elevation.
Okay.
I think, one other question, just, there's a note in the architectural plan within the open play daycare area, a three by five run, I believe it says. What is that?
So that area is essentially like a timeout cage for dogs that aren't behaving that need a, you know, a few minutes to kind of separate from the rest of the animals that allows us to separate them safely.
Okay, thank you.
Stand in the corner.
Alright, I'd like to open it up to public comment?
Hey there, again, Amy Hebert, One Diesel Camp Road in Wyndham, New Hampshire. I just wanted to make some comments in regards to Ms. Christensen's comments. Again, we've been a pillar of the community for a very long time. She pointed out very well that we've piecemealed the building over many years. And it's really doing a disservice to our clients at this point. It's limiting the number of patients we can help and really limiting what we can do for the community. We've been active in many ways over, you know, our very long span with the hospital and being able to kind of grow into a new building will allow us to continue to serve the community at a high level of care, which is ultimately our goal. Other than that, I think, you know, we talked a little bit about daycare and making sure that we're very respectful of our neighbors. I think one of the great things with the layout that our architecture and engineering team has done with this also allows us to create a workflow that really the times that the dogs are gonna be out are gonna be times during the day when people are at work. So, you know, they're going out midday to go to the bathroom. People are at work, they're not going to hear any of the noise, even in those small times they are outside. So we've tried to be very cognizant of that to impact our neighbors as minimally as possible. So.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Jamie Roacher. I'm the medical director over at Merrimack. Just in light of, I don't have a ton of architectural experience, but as far as soundproofing, we will be a hospital. So having daycare next to us and having them in twenty, you know, the whole time of the day, it has to be quiet. The soundproofing has to be efficient because we're ultimately going to be having very sad appointments, sick appointments, surgeries, wellness appointments. So that is of utmost importance for us, is running a hospital side by side to a daycare. So yes, for outside it'll be very important, but it has to be properly soundproofed for us to function on the inside as a hospital as well. And it's really important and thank you for your time.
Robert, does staff have any comments on this?
Just one to bring to the applicant's attention. In the, in the staff memo, we called out on it under the planning technical comments on page four, but this was an issue that we ran into with the previous applicant, so I just wanted to give you an early heads up on it so you can get the ball rolling. There is a DOT slope easement on this property. You've got some of your parking spaces and landscaping in that area now. In conversations with DOT, the previous applicant did learn that they would require DOT excavation permit and they would want to review stuff, so get in touch with District Five as soon as you can to get the ball rolling, because I know that they run pretty slowly.
Yeah, we've already talked to Mr. Demers at DOT. We've already sent him the plans and opened up that dialogue so that we can make sure that we're there.
Excellent. Thank you.
So based on this, we're gonna see them again?
Yes, because we don't quite have the peer review comments to make sure that everything's fine. We'd like to continue.
Alright, so is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue the applicant's public hearing to the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four public planning board meeting, or a later date if the applicant wishes, in order to allow Fussin O'Neil time to complete the review and revise the plan and address any staff or peer review comments. With no further notice to a butters.
Is there a second?
A second.
Jamie.
Alright, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Six zero zero, motion moves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was that date?
Eighteenth.
Alright. Item number five, public hearing, zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Board will consider amendments to the zoning ordinance pursuant to RSA six seventy-five colon six and six seventy-five colon seven. The purpose of the amendments is to bring the town's flood hazard conservation district ordinance, section two dot zero two dot eight, into compliance with National Flood Insurance Program requirements. Full text can be found on the Community Development Department at the office or on the town's website.
Alright.
Any comments?
So, yeah, with this, we had a workshop with you guys back on April second to briefly introduce and I had no comments at the time. Just as a way of reminder or some information for those who may not have been here that night, we received some comment from the Office of State, Office of Planning and Development, sorry, that they, they've gone through and reviewed our flood ordinance as well as all the other communities in the state. And they've made some comments to every town to update their ordinances to keep the language in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's what you're looking at in front of you here. It's just the state required amendments to make sure that we remain compliant with the program. Vast majority of them are clerical in nature, just updating some terminology. There's one rewritten definition, I think, is the most serious thing that's in here.
Okay. Any comments?
This made sense to me. I have no objections.
Okay.
So, public comment? No, that's public hearing, so we do have to ask for public comment.
I apologize. Alright, open it to the public hearing.
Hello, Grace, you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Alright, public hearing's closed. What is the will of the board?
Now I'll move that the, that the planning board recommend that the town council adopt the proposed zoning amendments.
Alright, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Six zero zero.
There's no more hundred year flood. I will miss it.
Alright, number six, item number six, Planning and Zoning Administrators Report Discussion: Possible Action Regarding Other Actions of Concern. Mr. Price?
I do have one. Just gonna finish this, okay. At your last meeting, there was discussion that you wanted to have a site walk on the Merrimack Park Place site?
Yeah.
And that's fine and great. You guys chose a date, June first, excellent. No one set a time. And no one set any idea of how to meet. So since it does have to be a publicly posted meeting of the board, I would like you to try to please make a new motion for that to get all that stuff cleared up tonight, please.
I thought there was a time set in the minutes. Let me, let me look at that again.
Well, but not a place, so we can clarify both.
The place was not set, but the.
When and where?
I would say we meet in the roundabout. Is that appropriate?
Well.
Yes.
There is no roundabout.
Can't park there.
Oh, yeah.
The roundabout isn't there yet.
Well, in that location, because we can park along that street.
You can park along there somewhere, yeah.
Is there a time that works for everybody?
I thought it was a time here.
Is nine o'clock too early?
No, that's a good time.
Okay.
For me.
Everybody else? You won't be here?
I unfortunately will also not be here.
Neither will I.
So do we need, I'll be there. Do we need a different date?
I won't be there for the first two weeks. I won't be available till around like the second.
If I'm not mistaken, Bob won't be available for that either.
He isn't either.
Do we want to do?
I think we need a different date.
I'm all for it.
Yeah. Two weeks later.
When are they, Robert, when are they coming in front of the board?
They are back that, that June.
On the second? If my memory serves me, I thought it was the second.
I think it's the early meeting.
No, the fourth, I apologize, not the second.
Yes. Yeah, they are back on June fourth.
That doesn't give us much room here.
What's everybody doing this weekend?
I'm not here. You can do next week.
Yeah, I won't be here this weekend.
We're out of options, as far as weekends.
Yeah, we are. Because this weekend is the twenty-fifth and the first.
Any weekdays?
I was gonna say, can we do it during the week?
Yeah, I'm flexible.
I am.
I don't know everybody else's days. How long do you think this site walk will take?
Forty-five minutes, maybe?
Alright.
We'll do it at lunch.
Lunch break?
Yes.
When do you get back, Jamie?
I'll be here Tuesday.
Which Tuesday?
The twenty-eighth?
Okay. Works for me.
Do you want to make it for the twenty-eighth?
Sure. You okay, Mark?
I know Tom won't be able to make it.
Anything, well Jamie, when are you, are you leaving again, right? You're back on Tuesday and then leaving again?
And then Friday.
Twenty-day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday morning, anytime Thursday. Most morning to midday would work, the thirtieth.
Nine o'clock? Ten o'clock?
Yeah, either.
Nine o'clock is after Rotary, so.
What day are you on?
Thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
Thursday, May thirtieth.
My replacement is going to be Tom Koenig and he works, so he would not be able to make one midday.
That's alright.
But he's, he's done a site walk down there before.
I think he has, but maybe not recently. And I hesitate to include myself.
I'm helping a blood drive.
It won't have any impact going forward.
Alright, everybody that can make it on the thirtieth?
I can't.
Nelson can?
If we do, oh yeah, the thirtieth is really good.
You can't do that either?
Yeah. Okay.
Back to the first?
Back to, back to the first?
But it sounds like there's only one or two of us can make it. It doesn't make sense to haul them out to do it.
Is it possible to do more than one site walk?
I hesitate to.
Robert, I'm not trying to create more work, I'm just trying to find solutions.
Everybody should be on the same site walk.
Yeah, I get it.
Different discussions may occur otherwise.
I totally get it. I just, we're left with.
I mean, if you do like lunchtime on the thirtieth, I said, but you were talking about like nine or something on the thirtieth.
What time?
Lunchtime. You said lunchtime, I could do, but you were talking about.
That would work for me.
What, I didn't hear.
Nelson, will the blood drive give you a lunch break?
No, the lunch break is all afternoon on the thirtieth, yeah.
All afternoon, you're free in the afternoon on the thirtieth?
No, that's when the blood drive is. That's when I can't be there.
Can we do noon time?
Twelve P M.
Let me see, that would be, yeah, I guess I could. I could do noon on the thirtieth.
That sounds like a good plan.
Works for me. Robert, I think.
It's just too, it's cutting me short.
Do they have, do you have to coordinate that with?
They'll make themselves available.
Ah, okay.
So I've got May thirtieth at.
Noon.
Twelve P M.
Meeting at the proposed roundabout.
Yes.
An hour isn't enough time, I don't think, to do that job, but.
Do what we can.
Have pass that on.
Yep.
Very good.
Bring your notes.
Thank you, we'll get that posted.
So we can just hit them quick.
Okay.
Okay?
I got it.
Robert, was there anything else that you wanted us to?
That is all I had tonight.
Okay, so, motion.
Will there be like an official notice that goes out for that?
I can't.
Has to be posted.
It does not get mailed to a butters or anything like that, just gets posted.
It should be there about twelve-thirty.
Can you give us thirty minutes or twenty minutes?
Well, it's gonna take more than twenty minutes to go through that site.
Give us what you can give us.
I will say, since it is a weekday, we will have staff available to be able to attend so we could take notes. Otherwise, if this were a weekend, someone from the board would have to take the, keep the minutes.
See, that works better.
We could have a staff representative attend.
So did that clarify the motion from last month?
Yes, we're all set.
Okay.
Mark?
Robert, one question for you.
Yes.
Several weeks ago, the developer up by St. Cabane asked for a phasing to do the roadway widening work and they were, because of asphalt plants not being open, and I think they were trying to get that completed by the end of April. Do we have any update from them as to, if that has been done? I don't believe anything has changed there.
I have no updates there.
Nothing's changed there.
Yeah, I don't.
Looks about the same.
Alright, moving on to number seven. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Are there any?
I will move that we approve them as printed. Somebody may have amendments to that motion.
We have no amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor say aye.
See, you took pity on you.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
Alright, it is five zero one.
I move adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Comments before?